October 9, 2017. It's 6:02 PM and this meeting is called to order. At this time, we'd like to ask that all electronic devices be turned off as they have a tendency to interfere with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff. There'll be a question and answer session between staff and the board. Once that's taken care of, we'll have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the application. The questions, the board will have questions for the applicant as well. Once those questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We ask that you please direct all your comments to the board, not the applicant. All right, there are many items on our agenda that we're not going to discuss tonight. Items that have been withdrawn and items that are going to be tabled. So if you're here for any of the items that are highlighted in red, they will not be discussed at this meeting. All right, the first item on the agenda is item 2017-214. This is zoning request Z17-012. This has been withdrawn at the request of the applicant. Yeah, we're grateful as well, I promise you. Item number two, 2017-252. This is zoning request Z17-013. This is rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of four single-family residences at a density of 3.39 units per acre. It's 1.18 acres on Land Lot 593. It's 1505 and 1515 Spring Street. The applicant is Neighborhood Commercial LLC. Mr. Martin, I do believe you're giving us the background on this.
All right, this is rezoning case Z17-013. It was originally scheduled to be heard last meeting, but there was a request to table and then we canceled the meeting due to Hurricane Irma. So it'll be heard tonight. It'll go before the...
Hang on one second. We're having some technical difficulty back here. Could you get Earl up and running, please? Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Rusty.
You want me to go?
Yeah, go.
Okay. The subject property is 1505 and 1515 Spring Street. It's approximately 1.18 acres in size. It's currently vacant. There is no structure on site. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of four single-family homes. As you can see on the development map or on the zoning map, the adjoining properties to the west are zone R15. The properties to the north are RAD and R15. To the east are RAD and then to the south is R15. The subject property has a future land use designation of moderate-density residential, which is up to 4.5 units per acre. The proposed density for the four single-family homes is 3.39 units per acre, so there's no need to change the future development map. And as you can see, all the surrounding properties around the subject property have a land use designation of moderate-density residential as well. Here's the proposed site plan. There'll be a new private road with a 50-foot public access and utility easement headed north along the eastern boundary of the property line. And then the first home will front on Spring Road on Lot 1. And then lots 2, 3, and 4 will front on the private drive. There is a fire truck turnaround in the middle of the site with an amenity area, and I'll highlight all this stuff for you so you can identify it here in a second. And then a detention facility on the north end. So the applicant is requesting a couple of variances on the front and side setbacks from 20 feet for the front, a side setback of 5 feet, and a rear setback of 30. The detention facility is located on the north side. Here's an open space with amenities, which is a low wall and some seats and pergola, bench seating and a pergola. Here's a fire truck turnaround that's needed for access for the site. There'll be a 5-foot right-of-way dedication associated with the rezoning and then a new public sidewalk. Here's a street view from basically the corner of the private drive and Spring Road. Here's the proposed home elevations. The two pictures on the top are of the home that'll front on Spring Road or Spring Street. The picture on the left will be your view from Spring Street, and then the picture on the right will be the view from the private drive. And then the homes on lots 2, 3, and 4 will have similar architecture to the picture on the bottom. Here's the subject property. And then some adjacent properties to give you some context of what's going on immediately adjacent to the property. Community Development is recommending approval of the rezoning from R15 RAD conditional for four single-family homes at a density of 3.39 units per acre with the following conditions. All the conditions in Section 1201 except for number 2, 8, and 17. The rest of the condition will apply, which deal with the composition of the homes, the requirement for an HOA, the requirements for open space, stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, stamped or a stamped concrete or paved entrance, and then no burning of debris on site, the development of the private road to city standards, the installation of streetlights along that private road, and then meeting the tree ordinance and landscaping requirements. In addition to those standard conditions, we have several special conditions. The first one dealing with the minimum setbacks for the site with a front setback of 20 feet, a side of 5, and a rear of 30. Number 16 is the minimum lot size for the development is approximately 9,000 square feet. Number 17 has a minimum required floor area of 1,800 square feet. And number 18 requires a minimum driveway length of 22 feet. Number 19 requires a 5-foot dedication along Spring Street. Number 20, there should be a 10-foot landscape buffer along the northern property line. 21 is a 5-foot sidewalk with 2-foot grass buffer along Spring Street and then a 5-foot sidewalk along the private drive or private street. Number 22, the private street shall be designed with a 26-foot wide street from back curb to back curb. 23, the developer shall work with the city engineer to remedy any potential site distance issues, and that'll be handled during permitting and plan review. Number 24, the developer shall be responsible for any water and sanitary sewer improvements deemed necessary by the Public Works Director. 25, the developer shall be responsible for any fire access improvements deemed necessary by the fire marshal during plan review. 26 is the requirement for the provision of a 50-foot public access and utility easement over the private street. 27, the stormwater management facility needs to be located on its own separate lot. 28, all trees need to be protected that are planned to be preserved need to be protected during development if they're within the limits of disturbance and they're not protected with tree fencing and so forth, and they need to be removed. 29, we need to create a deed covenant for the private street for the ownership and maintenance of that street by the HOA. 30, the home along Spring Street shall front on Spring Street and present to Spring Street. 31, the private drive shall not be gated. 32 is development of the property in substantial compliance to the submitted site plan. Number 33 is tying the building elevations to the elevations submitted in the zoning application. And then 34 is additional stipulations agreed upon by the applicant and submitted by their attorney. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions at this time? No? All right, if we could have the applicant come forward. Good evening, Mr. Sams.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. It's good to see each and every one of you tonight. For the record, my name's Garvis Sams. I represent, in this particular case, Neighborhood Commercial LLC. I have with me tonight its principals, Mr. Thayer Hanoway and Ms. Jennifer Steele. They're seated here on the second row. And of course, the three of us will be available to respond to any questions or address any concerns you may have at the appropriate time. What you've been or being handed out by the clerk is not all the, of course, the exhibits that Mr. Martin gave to you, but some of them that we think are probably the most demonstrative with respect to what is planned, what is proposed, and some of the more salient aspects of what we're presenting. As always, your senior planner has done an excellent job giving you an idea of what this is about. And I want to give you an idea not only what it's about, but also what it's not. This property at issue consists of a 1.18-acre tract of land. As you can see, it's located on the north side of Spring Street. Now, not Spring Road, I historically have gotten that wrong, but it's Spring Street. And it's presently zoned R15, and it's bounded, interestingly enough, on the north by a three-lot subdivision that is fronting on Walker Street. It is zoned RAD conditional, which is the classification which Mr. Hanoway seeks tonight. And that was a rezoning back in 2015. That was Z15-011. On the east, it is also has contiguous property that is zoned in the RAD conditional classification. This is one which I handled back in 2013. It was Z13-008. And then on the south, of course, you can see it's bordered by Spring Street and R15 across from that. And then if you look to the west, not necessarily of this particular exhibit that's showing, but any GIS map or other aerial photography that you may have, some of which is included in the package, you'll see that it is directly contiguous to a vertically oriented R15 residential development. The reason I bring all of that to light is because it is, of course, not only similar to, but analogous or less in terms of density than the surrounding zonings, and also the vertically oriented development contiguous into the west is important in terms of what we anticipate, maybe some of potential objections. This isn't a moderate-density area in the future land use map, so it doesn't require, assuming your recommendation for approval, it doesn't require any kind of a land use map. In fact, we're 3.39 units per acre, which is an entire one unit per acre less than what would be allowed as a maximum density under moderate. While this application has been pending, and I don't know how much you've interfaced with the members of the public, it's been pending for a couple of months and a couple of times been continued or tabled typically at our request. Some of that in concert with some additional information that staff may have needed. But what we've discerned, what we've picked up in the community, is there seems to be some confusion because back in 2015, those of you which were on the board, the Planning and Zoning Board, then heard another application, a component of which was this property. But I'm seeing parallels drawn by those who have interest in this application. I'd like to point out just the differences. There's about four or five differences, but they're fairly major, at least in our estimation. The 2015 zoning was to rezone a 2.36-acre tract of land. This is a 1.88-acre tract of land, so we're talking about a different assemblage of property. The 2015 proposal was for six lots. That's how it started out. This is for four lots, four homes. The 2015 rezoning, in addition to those two discrepancies or disparities, was at a proposed density of 3.84 units per acre. And of course, Mr. Martin's told you that we're at a density of 3.39. One of the major differences was that in 2015, that rezoning was for proposed homes at $500,000. And the price points for the homes that Mr. Hanoway and Neighborhood Commercial are going to build will range from minimum $600,000 to $720,000 and greater. And I know you can't make that a stipulation or a condition of the zoning, but if you make a recommendation in substantial compliance to the architectural renderings we submitted and the square footage of the homes, and that dictates the price points that we are representing to you, and we're bound, at least from our perspective, to be held by that whether you can legally impose that as a condition or stipulation. Another rather interesting component to the 2015 rezoning is when it was zoned, they incorporated and utilized open space from the adjoining subdivision to the east to calculate density. They utilized that same subdivision to calculate and take advantage of sort of double-dipping on open space requirements. What you're seeing tonight with respect to this application and this proposal is a total standalone community. It's not dependent upon any other properties in terms of density calculations, in terms of open spaces, or in terms of any other components which we think have any bearing, certainly on the issues that are before you tonight. While this application has been pending, we've established a dialogue with the professional staff, obviously, the various components or departments such as the city engineer, the public works director. We've also spoke early on with former council member Terry Anulowitsch back in January of this year and a couple of times since then. Obviously, you and all of us were disappointed to see her go, but I'm sure that seat will be filled. I think there's a special election coming up. So we've had also meetings with area residents and other property owners. So in that regard, we submitted what Mr. Martin has made reference to, which is the revised stipulation letter and the revised site plan that we submitted on September the 26th, which covers our agreement with your professional staff and covers our agreements with others in the area. These are four homes that are not speculative. These will be custom, quality-built, pre-sales that will reach, again, the price points I mentioned, 600 to 720 and greater. The house size ranges from 3,000 to 4,500 square feet. And again, if you do the math, and I know you do, then you know that that certainly comports with what you're seeing, particularly over the past three years. And of course, Smyrna is the most burgeoning, busy in terms of issues, or excuse me, permits issued than any of the jurisdiction. And I think that was, as I believe, covered in the Atlanta Journal-Constitution a couple of months ago. And of course, the architectural style and composition, we're agreeing that what we do will be in substantial conformity to what you see. And when we say substantial conformity, that really doesn't give any wiggle room for us, but what we've done in terms of crafting stipulations is at least given your community development director or whomever he may designate the authority to make minor modifications to that. If a gable needs to go here instead of it there, porch needs to go here as opposed to a stoop, then certainly Mr. Sudrith is imbued with the authority, at least under the stipulations we've articulated, to be able to make those changes. The homes, as large as they are and with the appointments and amenities they have, they will have a minimum two-car garages. There'll be a couple of the homes that'll have three-car garages. So at all times, there'll be a minimum of two cars that will or can be parked in the garage, if not three. Obviously, with the 22-foot in length driveways, we can accommodate at least two more vehicles as well. So by large, with these homes served by the private street, the parking is sufficiently taken care of. I will say this, that the houses are oriented to the interior streets, except for Lot 1. That house will present itself as being oriented to, and of course, as you can see, have a sidewalk to and then pedestrian connectivity going north and east and west. And so architecturally, you can see that in the handout. You've got a picture of it being oriented toward Spring Street, and you have the picture of it as you go up the interior street to look at it as well. And that seems to have been important to some of the folks with whom we have spoken. If you will look again at the site plan, which is, this is a conceptual part, there's a more technical site plan, this is a good one to look at in terms of understanding or getting an idea with respect to the inordinate amount of conscientious effort that's been placed toward the landscaping of this. And as you can see, along the eastern side of the property, in order to soften or transition or to provide privacy between one subdivision and another, what we've done, you can see there is a green, what we call a natural green fence that will, of course, be taken care of in perpetuity by our mandatory homeowners association. In addition to that, and based on conversations we had with area residents, the hammerhead is no longer a hammerhead. It's the reverse sides of the street. It's situated between, as you can see, lots 2 and 3. It will meet with your fire department's recommendations in terms of turning radius and maneuverability with respect to fire apparatus vehicles, which, of course, there's a certain pounds per square inch they have to have in terms of payment. There's a certain radii that has to be identified with and followed with respect to turning maneuverability as well. But if you look a little more closely where that fire apparatus turnaround is situated on the property, you're also going to see that it has been softened with low stone features that will consist of a curved circular wall with a stone patio area. And in front of that patio area is going to be a pergola with bench seating going directly across the private street, which again is built to the city's design and detailed specifications, except with respect to width. You can see matching seating area on that side of the property as well. The detention pond that we have will be significantly and heavily landscaped in accordance with your arborist recommendations and enhanced above what you see now. We have an agreement with if the contiguous HOA would like for us to do this, and that is to heavily landscape their detention, their open space area to create, again, more privacy. Because if you viewed it now, you would see that that detention area, that open space has remained unadorned since it went through the rezoning and entitlement process back in 2013. In the zonings that I've done within this area of the city, many of the individuals who represent this area have issued the proposition of having signage. And so the way we have it in the stipulation letter is if you, as a planning commission, think and recommend that signage is appropriate, then we'll do ground-based monuments to the signage, which will be lighted and irrigated and, of course, landscaped in accordance with the balance of the landscaping you see on the site. If you decide you don't want it as a separate identifier, since this is an infill piece of property, then we're fine without specific identification for that. We're fine with your recommendation or the ultimate decision reached by the mayor and the city council. The open space area, and this is important, at least we think it's important, I think your staff does too, will be primarily used for passive residential purposes. But as you can see, it's going to have a gazebo, as I've mentioned, benches, walking trails, other aesthetically pleasing features that will provide meaningful pedestrian connectivity north and south on the interior of the site, and of course, along Spring Street as well. This is a very walkable community. I know that you know that, but this will certainly help, not only with respect to this property, the property next door, and the property up and down Spring Street, but also with respect to the RAD conditional subdivision that was rezoned, that's contiguous into our north on Walker. The detention pond that you're seeing on our side on the north, this is going to be an earthen structure, it'll be landscaped and screened from the neighbors, from any streets. So we'll have that for privacy with respect to what we propose and with respect to the existing subdivision that is there. Also, and finally, from a landscape perspective, we'll have sited front side and rear yard. Usually, you see used a side yard, and maybe there's not as much attention to the sides and rears, but they'll be sited on all sides and irrigated as well. While this application has been pending and discussions with Eric Randall, your city engineer who's here tonight, there's been concern about the upland watershed and how to handle stormwater from that. So there are a number of different methodologies that we can employ. There's a number of different approaches that the city engineer has recommended that may or may not include other upper watershed properties, but wanted you to know that there is an ongoing dialogue with Mr. Randall, and he's here tonight. Should you have any questions for him, and certainly my clients are here tonight, should they be able to fill any gaps that need to be filled in. Your city fire marshal, his charge is fire prevention and life safety, and I've learned over the years I've been doing this, that life safety and fire prevention trump every issue, as well it should. And so in this instance, we've agreed to all of their recommendations, including preparing a turning performance analysis on the fire apparatus turnaround that you see according to city's specifications. We've agreed to all the public works director's comments and recommendations. And we've left it so that your community development director has the authority to make minor modifications during the plan review process if the mayor and council see fit to recommend that as well. In conclusion, Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that staff has recommended approval. It actually recommended approval back in 2015 for the sixth lot, which ultimately devolved into a five-lot plan. So we're consistent with your staff's recommendations. We're consistent with your future land use map. We're consistent with your comprehensive land use plan. We are consistent with the recommendations from the consultants that you have. And I don't think that your Spring Road LCI master study goes down as far or back toward the city as far as this. But if it does, and there's something we're missing on that, certainly we'll comply with that LCI study, which we think's important. So from all perspectives, we think the Neighborhood Commercial's proposal is acceptable. It exceeds, we think, land use planning principles, and so we do ask you follow your staff's recommendation and that you, as a planning and zoning board, recommend to the mayor that the application be approved. And so Mr. Hanoway, Ms. Steele, and I are available to respond to any questions that you, Mr. Chairman, or members may have regarding the application.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. At this time, have any questions for the applicant? None down here. Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
I got a couple, a couple of minor ones, and it could be Russ, Mr. Martin, or you, Mr. Sams, or even the applicant. Inside the special stipulations, special conditions, I'm sorry. Item number 17... Inside the special stipulations, special conditions, I'm sorry, item number 17, it's got a minimum floor area of 1,800 square feet. You're quoting 3,000 to 4,500 square feet.
Yes, sir.
Price point at 600 to 720,000 dollars. The only reason I think that's important is it does dictate the level of quality, and I think you'd be challenged to sell an 1,800-square-foot house for 600,000 to 700,000 dollars. That's my first question.
To answer that question, we would ask that, to the extent it's possible, that our stipulation preempts not the right work, but it'd be the controlling step on that.
Okay. The, I'm not sure if we need to change anything to illustrate that or not, but the other item is related to the setbacks. We have a front setback of 20 feet, side setbacks of 5 feet, with a minimum between buildings of 10 feet, but we're illustrating on the site plan driveways, and appears to be shared driveways between the houses. Is it really necessary for us to have a minimum between buildings of 10 feet when that's not, according to the site plan, wouldn't be possible?
I didn't understand your question, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, I may have been listening to the wrong part of it and not the other part.
Did anybody in the room understand?
Maybe the city engineer.
No, the city engineer, that's the only time he's understood me in about three years.
Our plans are malleable to the extent that we can still make adjustments to it, but the spacing that we've got and the setbacks are obviously to take advantage of the footprints. And of course, the lots average 9,000, but some are larger.
Maybe this is a different way of approaching it, and I apologize. I don't think I really asked a question so much as I made a statement, but, so is it necessary for us to have these minimums between buildings, or is there another plan that we're working on that might be substituted for what we see here today, when what I'm seeing here today would be a greater distance between the structures?
Well, you're looking specifically at just the driveway area. There's two components to it. There's a side setback of 5 feet and then a building separation of 10 feet. The area behind the driveway, they could build up to 5 feet from their property line on either side, so there's your separation there, and then if a builder had a, something cantilevered over that side or something on that, we want to make sure that there's the correct separation from the buildings between the two buildings and make sure we have the 10-foot separation, because once you get within 10 feet, then you start into fire sprinkler systems and stuff like that.
Right, right. I guess that's what's a little bit perplexing to me, is we got 10 feet between buildings, but we're going to put a shared driveway between them. There's no way you can have 10 feet between the buildings and share in a driveway, right?
Yeah. Let me, just to cut to the chase, the question is, is the applicant willing to increase that minimum?
Yes. Certainly, look at that and...
I mean, I think that's what the chairman is asking. The 10 feet was there, the issue with the driveways are there, so at a minimum, you're talking 20 to 25 feet, I believe that's what you were basically asking for on that. Back to the previous question, yes, Mr. Chairman, you'll need to amend that item where we talk about 1,800. If they want to go up to a higher thing, or you feel like it needs to be, you'll need to amend that.
I think we're going to protect the neighborhood.
This is Mr. Thayer Halloway, who's the principal of Neighborhood Commercial. Would it be okay if you came forward?
Absolutely, please do.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name's Thayer Halloway. I think one of the reasons to leave the 5-foot setback is the fire turnaround area is actually owned by the HOA, so it has an actual property line. And if you look at those two houses, there's 5-foot of separation from the fire turnaround to that first unit. The houses that are there now, I'm not changing the house plans, I've already spent money to architecturally design the plans that we have, they match the existing roof prints. The minimum square footage we have for a house is 3,200 square feet.
So you'd be fine with us amending that from 1,800 to 3,200?
Yes.
And then the question that I have, I guess, is more specific to between the buildings.
Between the buildings, I don't know if that actually dictates into your legal jargon, because what the setback line is, is from the property line. And the property line at the fire turnaround is at the edges of the fire turnaround, because the HOA actually owns the center land.
Right.
And then there's 5 feet to the first building. So I don't know how that would be in a legal description change. That would have to be referred to your all's language or to our attorneys.
Absolutely. So we couldn't make the change for that to be minimum of 20 feet between buildings?
No, because then I wouldn't be able to put in my, the fire turnaround would not be able to be...
Between buildings?
Between buildings, I assume so, yes, that'd be fine.
Mr. Chairman, the easier way, I think, to do that is, since they brought up the issue of the HOA, is to have two setbacks, one dealing with the turnaround in the HOA property, but then you could say that the separation between the structures on lots one and two is, and then three and four are X.
I think, I think we're presenting a plan. He's already got house plans for it. I think it protects the neighbors for it to say a minimum between the buildings of X, that we couldn't change the plan. God forbid something happened. I mean, we were all here in 2008, 2009, and a lot of plans changed, so that's all I'm asking for, and we can do it however, however you guys see fit. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Halloway, I appreciate you coming up and clarifying that. All right, at this time, this is a public hearing. We'd like to ask anyone that is in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and sign the sign-in sheet at the podium. Mr. Ward, good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I believe I'm already signed in. Lemuel Ward, I live at 1496 Spring Street, which is directly, which is directly across the street, from, almost directly across the street from this development. And Mr. Garvis paints nice pictures, and he talks about compliance. The one thing, problem is, is they're not in compliance with the zoning code or the subdivision ordinance. It is not allowed to have a development that fronts on a private drive to be zoned and have furniture on a public street. I'll point out to you, and this is a copy of my objection letter for the record, and also reservation of constitutional right of office clerk, and I have a copy for everyone if I may approach.
Please do.
So you can follow along with me.
Thank you, sir.
I started with the basics. This is a, street is a dedicated and accepted public right-of-way. I have heard, I have heard private street, private driveway, private alley, but the definition of lot furniture is the boundary lot, the boundary line of a lot and a street And a yard, a front yard, is a yard that is situated between the street line right-of-way and the line representing the minimum front yard setback. These don't have front yards because they're on a private street, so they're not in compliance with the zoning code, with RAD conditional. They're also not in compliance with subdivision ordinance. Subdivision ordinance says that where the total number of lots is not increased and the resultant lots are equal in standards to the City of Smyrna standards, that's an exception to get you out of it. These don't comply. This was two lots made into four. They don't have, they don't have the required furniture. And the reason they didn't do it under the subdivision ordinance is because your attention would immediately be drawn to the fact that they do not have furniture on a public street. If you look at 502.14 of the subdivision ordinance, it states the collection of types of streets which are allowed, and an alley, which is vehicular access reserved as a means of secondary vehicular access to properties otherwise abutting on a street. Clearly not abutting on a street, this is an alley. You can't use an alley to make your front yard. Now, this is a, this is not a dedicated and accepted public right-of-way. I've got some legal jargon in here. If you want legal jargon, I gave it to you. I gave you the Latin terms for when streets are considered in the subdivision ordinance, those are the only streets that can be considered, because they didn't even bother to comply with the subdivision ordinance. You're not going to see the kind of streets here. They're stacking on a public, on a private alley, and that is a problem not only for us who live there, but it's a problem for the city at large. Now, I live across the street, it's hard enough to get out of my driveway in the morning without two-car garages, three-car garages, and extras coming out of there like that. That's why we should be protected by the zoning ordinance, by RAD conditional or by R-15. It's simply, when Mr. Sam spoke about the others being RAD conditional, they're RAD conditional, but they have furniture on public streets. They aren't stacked on an alley in a deep lot, and that's going to be the problem you're going to see. Once you let the camel's nose under the tent, every deep lot in Smyrna is going to be coming in here with a private drive to put a house in the backyard, simply because that's the economic. Don't be fooled by economics. The reason that I filed a signed letter here and reserve constitutional objections is, if we have to fight this, the cases say, and I've been trying zoning cases for 25 years, that the value of the property is largely irrelevant. Whether or not they can build fancy and expensive houses, it's not material to me. The zoning code is what's material, and they don't meet the zoning code. I would ask that you consider the problem that you're going to raise here if you allow this to be done. Your city attorney can review this letter, and I'll give a copy to Mr. Sams, and he can respond, but I don't see this as complying with the zoning code or with the subdivision The other thing I'll point out to you is that they're trying to get this for the meeting of November 20th. Special election likely will result in a runoff which won't be decided until December 5th. I submit to you, it is not proper for the city council to consider something when the chair for, when the seat for Ward III is vacant. So I would ask that in addition to recommending denial, that you recommend that the city council not consider this until after the special election. I'm getting close to my time, but I do want to, I want to emphasize that there are lots of folks, including some of my neighbors behind me, who are worried about houses next to them, which have not enough furniture and a long, narrow street. And if you bow to the idea that you can do RAD conditional with no furniture on a public street, you'll be making a policy decision and a mistake that will haunt Williams Park and the rest of the City of Smyrna for years to come. I appreciate your kind attention to details to this presentation, and I'm willing to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Ward? Thank you, Mr. Ward, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Susan Bentley, and my husband Keith couldn't be here tonight, so I'm speaking for both of us. I live on Gilbert Street in Williams Park, and I'm opposed to this for several reasons. When we moved here in 2006, my neighbors had already done a lot of work to try to build our neighborhood with a feeling of neighborliness, and a big part of that is having homes that don't have gated subdivisions, don't have monuments, and they face a city street with a porch that you can sit on and talk to your neighbors as they go by. To get this, we need to have the right kind of development. To me, this is not a street that these homes will be on. The one home faces out onto Spring Street, and that is true. The others face out onto an alley. It's been said that, well, the neighborhood will be welcome to walk down the private drive or street or alley or whatever it is, but I can't imagine that I want to walk down, you know, a private alley that's just going to end and not going anywhere. And there's so many of these lots that are so narrow that I've even had some other neighbors say, hey, if that gets approved, I'll just rack houses in behind me. Now, they weren't saying that seriously, but they are saying that fearfully. And I thought this was voted down a couple of years ago because it didn't face the city It just offends the character of our neighborhood. We want front porches, we want people walking down the sidewalk, and I don't want to see a bunch of private alleys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bentley. Good evening and welcome.
Hello. Amy Shea, I own the house at 1431 Mimosa Circle. We were here two years ago, and you guys, as Mr. Sims' word, were consistency. We want consistency. You voted the same project down two years ago, it just had one more house on it. The retention pond, it's at the top of a hill. This property is flat when you go back. It runs downhill on Spring. There is not going to be any water from these homes going towards that retention pond. It's going to be dry. In Williams Park, I have three addresses here, one on Whitfield Street, one on Gilbert, one on Wright Street. They've torn houses down and put one house in its place. They've torn two houses down on one of the streets, and they've put one house in its place. It can be done, and in the past, we have heard that there is a developer that wanted to purchase this property and put one house on it. It can be done. On Mimosa Circle, I have a one acre. If you start this, I can come back and say, well, you let him build four, I want to build three on my one acre and put a private alley down it. You have the problem with trash pickup, you're going to have to have a special truck to do trash pickup. You're going to have to have a special truck to go in and pick up limbs off the street. I'm not sure that the claw's going to be able to get down there and pick up all the limbs and the stuff off that street. I mean, there's several things, issues that come up when you have a private alley. But I can tell you, if you go through Williams Park, and I know that our rep isn't here tonight, but if you go through Williams Park, there's several homes, and there's bunches of them, mine included, I have an acre. I can put a private alley up, and my next-door neighbor, she can do the same thing. Are we going to start that and have everybody be able to put a private alley up and put three, four homes on it every time? I don't think that's where we want to go. I think we want, as Mr. Sims said, let's go with consistency. You voted it down two years ago, vote for denial tonight and be consistent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea.
I agree with everything's been said to this point. My name is Ron Davis, I live at 1351 Roswell Street. I live on three acres, and it's all over 300 feet deep. And taking off on what she just said, I could cut that into four alleys and build 12 to 15 houses there if this thing's approved, it sets the precedent. This is serious stuff. Even if you think this project is legal, and of course with Mr., with Lynn's comments, even if you think it's legal, you should turn this down, should do what's right for the city and for the neighborhood, not what's right for a company that, or an individual that wants to cut an alley in, in our neighborhood, which is totally against the characteristics of our neighborhood for profit. That's what it is, it's for profit. We've had other attempts to take advantage of our deep backyards in Williams Park. One of the most gross ones was when Hank Dudak tried to cut a street to the rear of the properties on Highland Avenue years ago, and that was readily turned down. He wouldn't withdraw it, it was turned down. I think, this is my personal comment, that the misuse of these two lots by creating an alley and then saying that we're building it something less than four units per acre, I think it's a fallacy, because that land is not intended to have an alley there. When this neighborhood was laid out, those two homes that are gone now that this proposal includes, one of them was over 100 years old, and it's always been two lots, one house each lot, and now we want to cut an alley, and it's density that doesn't have to be there. It's fake density, not intended, it's not for the neighborhood. And I wish they'd pulled this thing back and built two nice homes where Ruby Brawls' house used to be and the one to the east of her. and the one to the east of her and get off of this trying to stack houses in backyards. If you turn this thing down or recommend that it be turned down, it's our, it's our history that every time we've turned the project back because of opposition and the council voted no. In every instant, I don't think anybody can point out one to me that is not true. Somebody has come forward, stepped up, bought the same piece of property and built a project that was good for the neighborhood. I'll give you two examples, and they're many. John Williams back in the, when was that, Liam? Early 80s? No, early 90s. Long time ago. He wanted to build at seven units per acre over around Elizabeth Street where that beautiful Durham Park is now. Seven units per acre, which would have been nothing but concrete and asphalt over there. It would have ruined the Ward 2 with overflow of water down the stream. I forget the name of it now, but the one that runs through our neighborhood and on down in the Ward 2. And this, this thing was packed with people. And he was voted down. He threatened to sue. So be it. He didn't. But had he sued, he couldn't have won because it wasn't good for the neighborhood. It wasn't good for the city, and it was the city's right to turn it down. And look what we got over there now. Two days later, Ed Hatcher came to my front door and said, we're going to buy that property, and we're going to do something nice. I don't think it's anybody in here that can't say that subdivision over there around Durham Park is not a gorgeous thing of being. And it's because this council and this P&amp;Z had the courage to say no to something that, back then, seven units per acre was legal because we didn't have a four-and-a-half land use plan. I had another point, and I didn't. The other, the other one was recently down here when Branch Properties wanted to build all apartments. We got enough apartments. We got enough condos. We ended up with some apartments, and I think there's some condos in there, and there's a good bit of retail more than, more than before. And we got a better, we got a better project because the city voted no. And the comeback was better. It's all been said. I'll just conclude by saying, nobody's mentioned the Livable Centers Initiative. And I haven't read it. But I guarantee you, when you read it, you won't find alleyways in it. It talks connectivity, walking neighborhoods, and not dead-end alleys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. One at a time, guys. Good evening and welcome.
I was following the list. Hi. My name is Lee Friedman. I live at 2814 Wright Street, which is to the right, parallel to the proposal. I'm one of the guys who, about eight years ago, bought some property. It was originally zoned for three houses. We built our one house. And I'm very glad that we did. And we love our neighborhood. I thank my neighbors. My undergraduate degree was in urban history. And neighborhoods have character. They have personalities. And, you know, the proposal, as far as if there were two houses, they look like they're beautiful houses. If there were two, because one of the things that my wife and I looked at as I was finishing up my career as an elementary principal was, what's the livability? What type of lifestyle do we want to have? And I met Ron Davis and some others. And part of the reason that we purchased that property was the way in which the houses were laid out. And it's not, and they're small houses and large houses and all different types of architecture, but they all had one thing in common. They all were approachable. And that was the reason that we spent our life savings buying that property and building that house. And so I realized that when you're building and you're an investor, there is a profit motive, and that's what you have to have. But there's also a, an idea that you want to make sure that whatever we do as the city of Smyrna and as Williams Park, which is a very unique neighborhood, that we do it for the right reasons. So I just want to say that if there were two houses of that type of quality, I would applaud that. Because since I've been there, we probably have built, gosh, probably 80 houses in our neighborhood, but they all face forward. So I ask the, you all as the decision-makers to consider the livability and the viability of our very special neighborhood. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman.
Good evening. My name is Oliver Meinholt. I'm living on 1560 Walker Street. I basically touched the property or this project from the north. And I'm opposed to it because many things have been said already before. It is the density, which basically takes away the character of the whole neighborhood. Besides, I'm now, you know, surrounded by retention ponds. And now that we're really working properly, I mean, next door to us is a big pond now and a half-developed acre. And we have a lot of mosquito breeding areas there, which takes away the quality of life for the outside. And so I'm not a big fan of this. So please turn it down.
Thank you for your time. Good evening and welcome.
Hey, good evening. My name is Will Newton. I live at 1533 Spring Street, actually in one of the adjacent properties just to the east of the proposed development. I just want to start by saying, I'll speak for all the folks at our HOA, that there's privacy concerns with having homes that are facing right in our backyards. We have small children. So that, that's one of the concern. And I'll just make a couple of other comments. Just echoes what everyone else has said, what Mrs. Bentley has said, that this, in my opinion, goes against the character and traits of Williams Park. I think it goes against the look and feel of the neighborhood, the character that everyone's been talking about. It's just inconsistent with how the neighborhood is and how it needs to be going forward. And last, I'll echo what Mr. Ward said. I just think this sets a poor precedent. Everyone else has been saying, and I'll echo it, that anybody can take a deep lot and stack some homes there. I just really think it sets a poor precedent if it's, if it's passed. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Any questions for the applicant?
Can you get Jarvis to address the document we were handed?
Yeah.
He may want some time to think about it.
Okay.
Mr. Sams.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Monroe would like to know if you can address the document that Mr. Ward delivered.
I've been practicing law for 38 years, and I haven't even looked at it yet, Mr. Monroe. So I apologize for that. But I will say that what we try to do ahead of time, rather than getting in a position where we're not aware of the nature of the document, we try to share it with folks. But I haven't had a chance to study. But I will tell you this. On the issue of non-conformity with the regulations of the city of Smyrna, Mr. Ward, it's just wrong. Secondly, the plan that we submitted is specific to the plan that we've submitted, incorporating the recommendations of staff. And, you know, I'm going to be very short. I know I was getting ready to sound like I was getting wound up, but I'm not. But we'll tell you this, that I defer to your professional staff. They're not directed by anybody. They're not directed by you. Your mayor and city council aren't directed, aren't directing staff. That delegation of legislative authority that the mayor and council has is theirs and theirs alone. They delegated the advisory position to you guys. Our goal, our guideline, is what is in your ordinance and then what your staff suggests and/or imposes, whether we agree to it or not. And in all manner, this is consistent with the future land use map and the zoning ordinance and regulations. And to the extent it's not, which if there is, then I can't discern that, there's a stipulation there where we agree to comply with each and every aspect of that. And I don't think there's any way we could not unless your staff had granted variances by virtue of their analysis and recommendations. And I trust and I know you have read those. I appreciate all the people that speak tonight. I know they're imbued with a great deal of passion about Williams Park as well. They should be. But there's some nuanced things that we've done in the course of this. Agreeing to no signage, identification signage for an infill, infill development, agreeing that we would orient the first house that appeared to be directly presented from Spring Street. But if you look at the parcels immediately west of this, that is a vertically oriented group of housing that is no different than this. So we would say that there's not only Preston in the area. There's good direction for you as a planning zoning board to follow. Mr. Monroe, I will have that read, I promise you, before I get home tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. Any other questions, discussion?
I would like to make a couple of comments. First of all, Williams Park is one of the true treasures of our neighborhoods here in Smyrna. And every time we have a zoning that comes up, and this one might be the most popular one in the neighborhood. And you guys always come out and are very well organized in your comments, very respectful. And it's not always the case when we have opposition to an application. So I really appreciate the way you guys come out and present yourselves. And obviously, it's a great, great area to live in.
All right. Without any further discussion, I'd like to ask for a motion and a reminder to the board that Ms. Hein Warren is not here. So if somebody outside Ward 3 is going to have to make that motion.
Mr. Chair. In the absence of Emily Hein Warren, who is Ward 3, I had had some conversations with her because she has talked to a number of the neighbors. And I think, at this point, that you presented a very fine case as to what effect it'll have on your neighborhood. So in Emily's absence, I will make a motion to deny zoning request Z-17-013, the rezoning from R-15 to RAD development of four single-family homes.
We have a motion to deny. Mr. Campo, do we have a second? We have a second, Ms. Lightfoot. Please vote. There it is. The motion to deny is approved 4 to 1 with Mr. No, it can't be 4 to 1. It's got to be 5 to 1 with Mr. Monroe and the opposition. All right. Thank you very much. I'm sorry? Yours did not go through? What was your vote? It's a recommendation to deny the application. To deny it. She was, it's 5-1. 5-1. Thank you again for your time tonight. And this will be heard at mayor and council on November the 20th. Is it November the 20th?
Yes.
This will be heard at mayor and council on November 20th at 7:00 PM. Mr. Sams, thank you for your time. All right. The next item on our agenda. Next item on our agenda is item 2017-314. This item is to be tabled to the November 13, 2017 Planning and Zoning Board meeting to allow for the completion of a development of regional impact reviewed by the Atlanta Regional Commission and the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. Can we get a motion to table this item, please? Motion to table, Ms. Lightfoot. Ms. Harrington, second. Please vote. It's approved 6-0 to table. All right. The next item on our agenda is item 2017-316. This item is to be tabled to the November 13, 2017 Planning and Zoning Board meeting at the request of the applicant. Need a motion to table. Mr. Campo, motion to table. Ms. Lightfoot, is a second. Please vote. It's tabled 6-0. Okay. Next item we have on our agenda is item 2017-360. It's zoning request Z-17-0-018. It's rezoning from FC to RAD conditional for the development of two single-family homes, 0.446 acres, landlot 452. This is 990 Dell Avenue. Kimberly Norwood Properties is the applicant. Mr. Martin, in the background, please.
Good evening. This is rezoning case Z-17-018. Be heard by you guys tonight. You'll make a formal recommendation to the mayor and council. They'll hear it on November 20th and make a final decision at that time. The subject property is located at 990 Dell Avenue. It's slightly less than a half-acre in size. The applicant is proposing to tear down the existing home, subdivide the lot, and redevelop it with two new single-family homes. The zoning request is from...
Go ahead, Mr. Martin.
The rezoning is from future commercial to RAD conditional.
Mr. Ward.
Excuse me.
Sorry. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
As you can see on the zoning vicinity map, the property across, to the north across Dell Avenue is R-15. The property on either side, from the east and west, is future commercial. And then the property along Concord Road is light commercial, but that's been acquired by the city and is now a linear park. The future land use for the property is medium-density residential, which allows a density up to six units per acre. The proposed density for the two lots is 4.48 units per acre. So there's no land use request associated with this, with this rezoning. As you can see, the adjacent property to, across Dell Avenue has a moderate-density residential land use classification. And then the properties to the east, west, and south have a medium-density residential land use classification. Here's the proposed site plan. It's got a proposed front setback of 25 feet, a side setback of seven feet, a street side of 10, and a rear setback of 30. Here are the proposed locations of the stormwater detention facilities. They'll have individual facilities, one for each home. These will be bio-retention areas. It'll be underground. Associated with this rezoning is a five-foot right-of-way dedication along Dell Avenue to get the right-of-way up to the city standard of 50 feet. And then finally, there'll be a new sidewalk that'll connect to the existing sidewalk that runs from Evelyn to the, to the Concord Road linear park. Here are the proposed home elevations. Picture of the site. And then the adjoining properties give some context. Committee Development recommends approval of the rezoning from future commercial to RAD for two single-family homes at a density of 4.48 units per acre with following conditions. Standard conditions from Section 1201 of the zoning ordinance related to stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, and burying of debris. And then also related to tree ordinance and landscaping requirements. In addition to the standard conditions, we're requesting some special conditions. Number nine... conditions, we're requesting some special conditions. Number nine is, sets the minimum setbacks for the development. We've already gone over that. Number ten requires a minimum driveway length of twenty-two feet, and that's from building face to back of sidewalk or curb if no sidewalk is present. Number eleven is the requirement for the five-foot right-of-way dedication along Dell. Number twelve is the requirement for the five-foot sidewalk along Dell that connects to Evelyn. Number thirteen requires that all water and sewer tabs be bored. Number fourteen relates to the compositions of the homes and requires that the homes be made up of different material, and it may not be made up of one hundred percent hardy plank siding. Number fifteen ties the development to the site plan submitted. Number sixteen ties the architectural elevations to the elevation submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? All right. Thank you, sir. All right. This time, I'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the application. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening. I'm Sean Murphy. I live at thirty-two eighty-two Lee Street in Forest Hills. I'm the site planning consultant for the applicant, the applicant.
I'm Rick Cole. I'm here to represent Kimberly Norwood Properties.
Good evening, guys.
I don't have any specific presentation tonight. I would just point out that we did a similar split not more than a few months ago at one thousand McLendon Avenue, which is immediately one lot to the north of this on McLendon, the corner of McLendon and Evelyn, which this is, the cul-de-sac on my left is Evelyn. So, we're basically asking to do the same thing here. And then one thing that makes this maybe a little bit more palatable even than that one is that the street is no longer there that used to connect from Evelyn to Concord. Now, there's a sidewalk there. So, while the lot sizes are almost the same as one thousand McLendon, they actually appear even bigger because there's not a house immediately to the west side of the lot, one A. Other than that, again, this is a house that's been a rental for some time, so we're hoping to see this house become a permanent, or these two homes become two permanent owners in the neighborhood of Smyrna Heights North. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Murphy? Nobody wants to know the square footage, the price point, none of that?
They're going to be in the mid-fours, mid-high fours.
Okay. Any other questions? No. Thank you, Ms. Lightfoot. Thank you, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Cole. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. I don't think you ever have any opposition, Mr. Murphy. I really don't. That's fantastic. All right. Let's, I'll ask for a motion. And this is in Ward Three as well, correct? So, we're going to need one of you guys to step outside your work, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on the zoning request two zero one seven three six zero that we approve with staff's recommendations and conditions.
We had a motion, Mr. Monroe, to approve. He listed item number two zero one seven dash three six zero. It's actually zoning request Z seventeen dash zero one eight. That's a motion to approve. And a second, Ms. Lightfoot, please vote. Application is approved six zero. Congratulations, guys. Good luck with your project. All right. The next item on our agenda is item number two zero one seven dash three six two. This is zoning request Z one seven dash zero one nine. This is to be tabled to the November thirteen, two thousand seventeen Planning and Zoning Board Meeting at the request of the applicant. Can I please have a motion to table? Ms. Lightfoot and Ms. Harrington, seconded the motion. Please vote. It's approved six zero. The next item on our agenda is two zero one seven dash three five seven. This is zoning request Z one seven dash zero two one. This is to be tabled to the November thirteen, two thousand seventeen Planning and Zoning Board Meeting at the request of the applicant. And a motion to table, please. Mr. Monroe, motion to table, second. Ms. Harrington, and please vote. Approved six zero. Does anybody want to guess what's going on with our next item? All right. Item two zero one seven dash three five nine. This is zoning request Z one seven dash zero two zero. This is to be tabled to the November thirteen, two thousand seventeen Planning and Zoning Board Meeting at the request of the applicant. A motion to table. Ms. Lightfoot. Mr. Monroe, seconded, and then a vote, please. I'm going to guess, six zero. Perfect. I was right. All right. The next item on our agenda is item two zero one seven dash three five eight. This is R M fifteen conditional for the development of fifty-nine townhome units. It's a four point seven one acres at landlot eight oh nine. This is twenty-seven oh eight, twenty-seven twenty, twenty-seven thirty-two, twenty-seven forty-two, twenty-seven fifty-four, twenty-seven sixty-six, twenty-seven seventy-six, twenty-seven eighty-eight, twenty-eight hundred and twenty-eight twelve, Bell Drive. The Woodbury Group is the applicant. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
This zoning request will travel along the same path as the other two. You'll hear it tonight, and then mayor and council will hear it on November twentieth. The subject property is basically the ten single-family homes on the west side of Bell Drive as you enter from Spring Road and head towards Afton Downs. The subject site is approximately four point seven one acres. They're requesting to demo the existing ten single-family homes and requesting rezoning to build fifty-nine townhome units at a density of twelve point five two units per acre. The formal request is from R fifteen, which is a single-family zoning, to R M fifteen, which is residential multifamily, fifteen units per acre. The subject property has a feature land use designation of urban residential, which allows density above six units per acre. As you can see on this development map, the properties to the west, east, and south all have urban residential land use classification. Afton Downs to the north has a medium-density residential land use classification, which is up to six units per acre. And just to highlight what I just said, just so you can see where that urban residential is located, and then the medium density is up there. Just for some context, Afton Downs, without the right-of-way, has a density of around twelve units per acre. And Falling Waters, which adjoins it to the west, has approximately eleven units per acre. Here's the proposed site plan. As you can see, there's approximately ten buildings on, proposed for this development. The buildings along Bell Drive will front on Bell Drive and will have rear entry garages off of the new private road, and the homes that front on that private road will be front-entry, two-story townhomes. The minimum setbacks for this development are proposed to be fifteen-foot front with an allowance to encroach into, up to, to allow to extend to ten feet for the porches and stoops. The north side setback along Afton Downs is twenty feet. The south side along the retail center is ten feet, and then the rear setback is twenty feet along the Courtyard's apartment complex. Here's the proposed roadway. It's a fifty-foot public access easement with the utility easement. The water and sewer for the site will be served through this private roadway. There are three points of entry. There's one entry at the north end of the property near Afton Downs, one entrance in the center of the property, and then one down at the southern end of the property near the retail center. This is the location of a future right-of-way. This is a fifty-foot right-of-way that will connect Bell Drive to the apartment complex should it ever redevelop in a future date. Here's the proposed open space for the site with underground detention. Here's guest parking. There'll be a twenty-foot landscape buffer along the north side of the property that adjoins Afton Downs, and then a ten-foot landscape buffer along the southern property that adjoins the retail center. In addition, there are two more variances related to impervious surface area, and that request is to go from fifty percent, which is the zoning requirement, up to eighty percent, and then a building separation, reduction from thirty feet down to twenty feet. Staff is supportive of the impervious surface area increase because they are changing these units to rear-entry units, which creates the need for the new private drive as opposed to having individual drives come off of Bell Drive. In addition, staff has requested for the fifty-foot future right-of-way, which has created separation issues for the other buildings, so we are supportive of the reduction from thirty feet down to twenty feet. Here are the proposed elevations for the rear-entry townhomes. These are, these units are twenty-two feet by forty-six feet, and I've got them highlighted in yellow up there so you know where they are on the site plan. And they'll have the appearance of a two-story unit from Bell Drive, and then as you go around the back, they'll have a three-story The proposed twenty-six-foot wide townhomes, they'll also have a two-story elevation from the front. I believe these units will be two-story in the back as well, but I'll let the applicant verify that for you. We didn't get any renderings for that. And as you can see, these are the three buildings that are along Bell Drive on the south end of the And finally, these are the twenty-five-foot wide product by fifty, and these are the six buildings along the apartment building. And these are the front side and rear elevations. As you can see, they are two-story product. Here's the subject site. Committee Development is recommending approval of the requested zoning from R fifteen to R M fifteen conditional with the following conditions: standard conditions from section twelve oh one related to composition of the homes, protective covenants, open space requirements, stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, paved or stamped concrete entrances, specifications for road standards, building of burying, prohibiting the burying of debris on site, the installation of decorative streetlights, and then landscaping requirements. In addition to those requirements, we're also requesting some special conditions. We'll start off with number fourteen, which sets the minimum setbacks for the front at fifteen, the north side at twenty, the south side at ten, and the rear of twenty. Number fifteen establishes the minimum building separations, and that's front-to-rear building separation of fifty feet, and then a side-to-side of twenty. And that was, of course, the variance they were requesting. Number sixteen, each townhome building should be limited to six units per building. Seventeen requires a minimum floor area to be eighteen hundred square feet. Eighteen requires a minimum driveway length of twenty-two feet. Nineteen requires each unit to have a fire sprinkler system. Number twenty requires the rear of the townhome units to have architectural features that delineate the individual townhome units from each other. And that's due to the twenty-foot, twenty-five foot wide product, which sort of had the same elevation all the way across that building. We're trying to break that up. Twenty-one, the developer should provide a five-foot sidewalk along Bell, as well as a five-foot sidewalk along the private road. Twenty-two requires a ten-foot landscape buffer on the south end and a twenty-foot landscape buffer along the north property line. Twenty-three requires any water and sewer improvements deemed necessary by the Public Works Director. Twenty-four, the developer shall provide any fire access improvements required by the fire marshal. Twenty-five calls out the fifty-foot public access and utility easement over the private drive or the private street. Twenty-six prohibits the private street from being gated. Twenty-seven requires, calls out for the fifty-foot future right-of-way connection from Bell Drive to the apartment complex. Twenty-eight, the entrance within the right-of-way needs to be designed as a public street, so it's got to be twenty-six foot wide, back curb sidewalks, and everything else. Twenty-nine requires a stormwater facility be located on HOA property. Thirty requires street trees along Bell Drive to be a minimum spacing of forty feet. Thirty-one requires that any trees that are within the limits of disturbance either be protected or taken down during the development process. Thirty-two ties the approval of the zoning to the site plan submitted. Thirty-three ties the approval of zoning to the building elevation submitted. Thirty-four is a list of additional stipulations submitted by the applicant that they're agreeable to. And thirty-five deals with stormwater management and channel protection. Thirty-six is another stormwater management requirement, and thirty-seven is that the detention facility not be located under the private road, and if so, then there's certain design requirements. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Mr. Murphy, can you go back to number seventeen? They'll have a minimum floor area. Is that for the total building?
No, that's for the individual units, and that's just the minimum standard for the zoning classification.
I was reading this, and each floor was going to be eighteen hundred square feet.
No.
I wouldn't get into math. Okay. And did you say fourteen guest parking spots for these fifty-nine? Or is it more?
It was fourteen.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Martin?
Yeah, one quick question. Am I reading this, that it's underground detention?
Yes.
Facility?
It'll be under the open space.
And we can't, can't plant trees in that open space, then?
Right. The trees will have to be on the perimeter of that. The setback we require from the opens, from the detention facility is ten feet.
Any other questions for Mr. Martin? All right. At this time, we'd like to ask Mr. Sams to return to the podium. At this time, we'd like to ask Mr. Sams to return to the podium.
Again, uh, good evening. For the record, my name's Garvis Sams. The law firm is Sams, Lark, and Huff, and, and Bally and Marietta, and I represent, uh, David Woodbury, the Woodbury Group LLC. Mr. Woodbury is here tonight along, uh, with one of his, uh, coworkers and colleagues, uh, Mr. Todd Prinky. So at the appropriate time, we can respond to any, any questions you have. Uh, you're being given some handouts, and, and although Mr., um, Martin O'Se does a great job showing you the, the latest and the greatest in terms of, of handouts, uh, you might look at the first page, uh, of this particular handout, and it, and it shows a color version of the, of the site plan. We've got it here on a big board tonight. That's typically not the way y'all do things in terms of having boards and whatnot, but it, but it might give you a little more clarity in, in, in terms of not only the, the manner in which the, the proposal is situated, but also, uh, give you an idea of the, of the landscaping and the positioning of the, the points of ingress and egress. It, it appears to, at first blush, to be a, a rather straightforward zoning, and it, and it is, at least, uh, in terms of the, the developer. But from a technical perspective, there, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of things that are going on, and I'll, I'll try to get into that without getting into the minutia that are covered, that's covered during plan review. This is an application that, uh, proceeded, uh, or was proceeded, uh, last fall by a, a similar application. Uh, that particular one was for a three-point-nine-acre tract that's located on the eastern side of Bell Drive and both sides of Woodlawn Terrace. Tonight, uh, we, we just take it a, a block over, and on the west side of Bell Drive, east of the, the rather old, uh, and rather worn, uh, gallery apartments, uh, the, the massive multifamily development that's, that's to our, our west, and, and one which I think, without trying to speak for the, the owners of that, I think one which, which the, the city and, and others might like to see ultimately as a redevelopment site as, as well. Uh, we filed this application actually, um, uh, right, uh, on the verge of the, um, Spring Street Master Plan Livable Centers Initiative Study. I'm gonna call it LCI, uh, 'cause it's a mouthful anyway. But the point is, uh, what this is, 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 is designated specifically in that LCI study. It's part of that LCI study. Uh, and the property at issue, um, that we're proposing tonight is consistent with your future land use, uh, map, as, as Mr. Martin had said, and your development plan. And, uh, your future land use map shows urban residential development, which allows densities over six units per acre. It really doesn't cap it, uh, at, at one density or another, but, uh, with respect to what we did for Mr. Woodbury and, and his group, uh, last year, um, we're at essentially the same unit per acre and very consistent with, as Mr. Martin has pointed out, the, the, um, the subdivision called Afton Downs. And, and, and we, we've been and walked very gingerly around Afton Downs for a number of reasons. The residents are long-term, senior residents, and, and citizens and voters, and also, just quite candidly, because the, the work council person, Derek Norton, lives there as well. So it, it just moved us to, to do that, as we did last year. And, uh, so we've worked hand in glove with him. I typically don't remember or mention, you know, council members' names, but, but in this case, I, I don't think he would have any objection to that, 'cause he's been very integral, uh, not only in the process last year, but in the process, uh, this year as, as well. So we provide, um, under the Livable Centers Initiative, uh, study that was adopted in April, uh, of twenty-seventeen by the mayor and council, uh, we provide, uh, a situation where you transition, and then from a, a northerly direction to southerly direction towards Spring Road. This isn't Spring Street, this is Spring Road. And so it's an excellent step down or transition that from a, a land use planning or professional staff perspective, I think they really like to, to see. So, um, um, the, uh, Afton Downs is a circa nineteen eighty-two development, still very nicely kept with, with densities at, at around twelve units per acre. Uh, what we're proposing tonight, of course, is a, a townhome community, the same type of community that was proposed and approved, uh, last year. Uh, we have participated in, multiple, and I say multiple, uh, I mean, a lot of meetings with staff. It's not a criticism, that's a, a thank you to staff for, for helping, uh, us walk through this with them, uh, the city engineer, and of course, the public works, uh, director as well. Uh, we have met with area residents, uh, some of whom may, may be here tonight. The last time we were here, uh, last year, uh, there was, um, not a misunderstanding, but, but, um, perhaps we hadn't done, done a good job educating folks, but, but we went through the traffic issues, the traffic generation, the levels of service, and, and what the future land use map showed, and I think at the end of the day, there was a, there was a, a buy-in, um, to that. And so we thought, uh, in fact, we showed, if not you, I know we showed the mayor and council in a public forum and submitted to staff the, the proposed master plan, which envisioned exactly what, what you're seeing. Pretty darn close to what you're seeing tonight in terms of an assemblage and adding to what Mr. Woodbury has already been, been able to assemble. The price points of these townhomes, and, and if you go, referred to the first page, but if you keep, keep flipping over, you'll see the, the architectural style and composition, which is consistent with what was approved, uh, and what was recommended for approval by, by you as a planning and zoning board, uh, last year. It's four-sided architecture, which means not identical or identical on every side, but equal treatment on all sides. So, so you don't just have a, a pretty, uh, front and the rest of the, the building ignored. What you have here is a comprehensive, um, treatment, uh, of all the units. And with price points, as I mentioned, these are townhomes going from three sixty to, to four fifty and above. This is extremely, extremely nice, uh, product. While there's never enough time to go over, uh, the entirety of the, the lengthy stipulation letters, that I always have people thinking I get paid by the word, the longer they are, the, that's not the case. Uh, but, but there are some, some parts of that that, that lend themselves to going over tonight. Um, this is on four-point-seven-one-acre tract of land, fifty-nine homes, this is a density of twelve-point-five-two units per acre, a little less than, than I think we were right at thirteen units per acre with the one, uh, last year. Uh, the homes will, there will be, um, um, potentially some right at eighteen hundred, a, a little above, but they'll range up to three thousand square feet and above that, because we have a mixture of widths. And widths in townhomes is, is about as essential in determining price points as the square footage of the, of the homes, uh, themselves. We have sixteen twenty-two-foot-wide, uh, townhomes, fifteen twenty-six, uh, foot-wide townhomes, and twenty-eight twenty-five, uh, foot-wide, uh, townhomes. They'll all have two-car garages. They'll all have twenty-two feet on the driveway. Uh, one issue there is, uh, the measurement that, that we, we thought we had with, with, with staff and, and with the fire department, the city engineer and public works director was that that would be measured flush with the garage down to the street. But that's a, that's a, 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 it's a minutia, something we can work out between the, the mayor and, and council. But the, the two-car garage dedicated solely, or at all times at least, for at least two vehicles, at least two vehicles in the, in the driveways as well. We have guest parking, um, that we think is strategically, uh, positioned, the ponderance of which, of course, is, is around, uh, the, the detention area. And, uh, Mr. Bartlett, that is, that is underground. Uh, we find that it's, it's, it's better, um, in many respects. It's more costly, uh, from a water quality perspective, but from an aesthetic perspective, we think, we think it's appropriate. We have, uh, do not have the ability to, to plan on top of that, uh, because it is going to be dedicated to the city, and, and, and it's something that they, um, will want us to build it to, into their, their compliance. The, um, Public Works Director, uh, has said, just like he did with the other ones, and, and I felt like in the last application, people were using the word alleyways in a pejorative fashion, but, but these are streets. Uh, these are, these, as with the last one, but these are streets, they're private streets. But the point is, they're built to the county's design and detailed specifications, except with respect to width. And what that means is the, is the, uh, the thickness of the pavement, or the way the sidewalks curbing, guttering, and infrastructure such as stormwater management are all, uh, a, a part of this. So, uh, it's a widely-accepted, um, approach, and it's the approach that, that, um, Mr. Woodbury used last time with the, the other development. When, um, Mr. Woodbury first put this in, um, in draft form, I won't tell him, 'cause I can, uh, he, he, um, had it named, uh, something at the battery, and we, we happen to have represented the Braves in their rezoning, and, and we, we said that the Braves might, might not like an infringement on, on the name of the battery, 'cause you've got the Battery and SunTrust. So, so it's got a different working name now, but that doesn't make it any less important, nor any less within the halo effect of what the Braves are, are, have accomplished with the, the incredible, uh, development that they have. And we're within the ambit of that. Uh, other zonings you see, one of which you, you table tonight because it's a development of regional impact, and you'll see, uh, that our firm is involved in. And this is the gateway to the city. Uh, the Spring Road corridor, um, uh, operational, the changes that have been made, uh, at great cost to the city, uh, certainly we respect those. Uh, we've played into those, um, we've been a part of those, and we've had some input, although the consultants, the authors. We, we think with the tone of development we set last year, uh, in terms of reassembling and redevelopment properties, that I won't say they've outgrown their usefulness, and there's certainly nothing objectionable to them, but this is just the way this section of the Spring Road corridor is going. Um, and the closer you get to, to Cobb Parkway and, and, uh, the Battery and SunTrust Park, and the closer you get to that Nally site on the north side of Spring, uh, you're gonna see just massive, incredible changes, not with respect necessarily to this site, but over the next five to six years. It's gonna be, it's gonna be fun to watch, uh, I think, for you and for the, the city of Smyrna. Uh, I had an opportunity to go through the, the setbacks. It's technical data. We're, um, following staff's recommendations on that. The one, um, or one of the, the, the variances had to do with separation between buildings, and we do average thirty feet as separation between buildings. So I, I think staff supports the, the variances in, in that respect. We have left it, uh, so that Mr. Sudrith, um, the community development director, has the authority to make minor modifications. And, and with every plan that has as moving, as many moving parts as this in the plan review process, there are tweaks that need to be made and that don't need to come back before the mayor and council, so that's a part of our stipulation. So with that being said, I, I have other things I can address as far as traffic and, and other issues, and, um, so, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it at that. We do respectfully request that you follow, uh, Mr. Sudrith's, Mr. Martin's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. Any questions for the applicant? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. Well, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. And let the record show that Mr. Sams successfully waited out the opposition. All right. Without any further discussion, I'd like to, excuse me.
Bring up one point. His document right here says that we have total guest parking of a hundred and thirty spots.
Well, if there's fifty-nine units and they have two.
I did the math. I'm aware, but if I own it, I'm not a guest.
Good, it's a valid point.
That, and that's exactly why staff presented it the way we did.
Well, and exactly why I presented it the way I did. I, that's, that is David, that is a, um, a site planner, a registered landscape architect that, that seemed to factor in our parking, the driveways, and then the garage, and I, so I didn't make that representation. So my apologies, we'll get that corrected before mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe, for pointing that out. Any other discussion? I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
This time, a motion to approve rezoning, um, rezoning from.
We've got, go ahead. You got it?
Okay.
We have a motion to approve, um, for Mr. Bartlett, by far our most active rookie ever in the history of the Planning and Zoning Board. We have a motion to approve item two zero one seven dash three five eight. You have a second. Do we have a second? Ms. Harrington is our second. And please vote. The application is approved, six-zero. Mr. Woodbury, good luck with your, your plan, your, your project out there. Mr. Sams, thank you for your eloquent, um, presentation, as always. It's always a pleasure to see you, sir. All right. The last item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the August fourteenth, two thousand seventeen Planning and Zoning Meeting. That's because the September meeting was interrupted by Irma. So if we could get a, a motion to approve the minutes as presented, we have a motion to approve Mr. Rice, and we have a second. Ms. Lightfoot, please vote to approve the minutes. They're approved. And we do want to extend a warm welcome to Mr. Tom Bartlett for joining, uh, the Planning and Zoning Board and representing, uh, Ward One. God bless you. Any, any further discussion, comments? Mr. Sudrith?
Just one point of information. Um, the comprehensive plan goes to mayor and council next Monday for their final vote, just so that you know where it is in the process. Because of that, I also greatly appreciate, uh, those who were able to attend on the steering committee on the, uh, comprehensive plan, and, um, Monday night will be the adoption of the fourth study in the last twelve months. Uh, so we'll take a break for a few months before we get involved, uh, with anything else. But we will start, um, developing a plan for the implementation parts of all of those studies. So that's what next year will be, is to, um, translate what we did into actual action on that. But next Monday will be, um, uh, it'll be up for adoption.
Very good. Excellent news. All right. Well, without any further business, unless you have some, Mr. Martin?
Say the final.
Very cool. All right, excellent. Without any further business, this meeting is adjourned at seven forty-eight.